Senator Clack, please stand for the pledge. Okay, we get the approval of minutes of March 20th. If there's any additions, corrections to the minutes.
I'll move.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The motion is accept the financial report and payment of bills.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. You have a budget amendment?
Yes, I want tonight. Pledge amendment number 2013-015. It's a transfer within the Elkton Peace Department, $5,000 from the contract of services line other into their contract of services line maintenance. That's basically due cover. And it's estimated under expenditure in the contract service elder account and put it into the maintenance account where there is a negative balance right now. It's all within contract of services, all within the Elkton Peace Department.
Okay. There are motions accept budget amendment 2013-015.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Genie? You got the resolution?
About yard waste.
There. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I jumped over, okay. Yard waste. Sorry, I'm trying to move too fast. Come on there. I'm going to get you.
Still loving this room.
Good evening, Mayor Fasona. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
There you go. My name is Ray Lanzarote, doesn't know me. I'm Dan Hamlet, Director of Public Works. And with me tonight is Sidney Ofo Batini. Say hi to Sidney. Sidney's in charge, what he does for the town is he's in charge of all the stormwater management ponds. He's in charge of our compliance. Tonight, we're going to present something I brought up in the February meeting, and I'd like to bring more detail with it. It's called the Elkton It's in the Bag Program. It's our grass and leaf initiative. Okay. Why are we doing it? Several surrounding municipalities that actively collect grass and leaves do not allow the residents to dump yard waste curbside. And you can see by the chart right here, you know, our population, we get, they get services twice a week. You can see the other jurisdictions within the county, they do it maybe once a week or something like that. But you want to concentrate on the column to the right. Whether they want to collect loose grass and leaves, everybody else has bagged grass and leaves, and there's a reason behind it. Because as we go further into the details, you'll understand why the advantage of bagging the yard waste is with respect to cost, maintenance, and overall for the environment equality.
Let me stop you one second. Is there any reason why port deposit was not indicated? I know you have the, all the towns and municipality within Cecil, but I don't see them there.
I don't, don't they have it? I'm not, I don't think they have it.
So if you don't think they have it, then you're in contact though?
No, no, I mean, I have a list right in front of me. I don't, I don't think they have it.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 service is not offered.
That's the answer then.
Yeah, service is not offered. I had to pull my chi chi out. There you go. There you go. Port deposit doesn't do it, so there you go. Okay. Again, why, continuing why? Several surrounding municipalities that actively collect grass and leaves do not allow the residents to dump yard waste curbside. Reason, loose curbside yard waste looks unsightly, causes maintenance issues, and adversely impacts the environment. The reason why, I believe the reason why we collected the grass from day one is because you want to make a nice appearance in the community. Unfortunately, when the community's small, it's manageable. But now we've grown and grown and grown. If you go back to the previous slide, you go over 15,000 residents. It gets, it gets a little, it's a little overwhelming. So that's why what we're trying to do is, within my department, what's the best way of offering the service while maintaining the, the compliance for the future compliance and be more efficient as we do it? And this is kind of what we're leading up to this program, so. Okay, dumping versus bagging, right there. Liability, safety. If we, if we, what happened is the way we do it in the past, and a lot of people still do it, is they'll bag the material and they'll put it into the, and put it all into the street. And the first liability we have, which is something to be careful about, is safety. Our first priority is to ensure safety for my personnel and my public alike. And altering the current grass and leaf collection procedures further increases the safety of staff and residents. If you put a lot of, like, grass debris along Main Street or put along someplace else, it gets, you know, with the traffic, it's a little bit much, so. If we can do it a more efficient way, we're in and out there as possible. Same thing, but also, the way we actually collect it, if you, I have a picture of it, it's almost like a big vacuum cleaner, so it's not exactly the most easy thing to renovate. It's very cumbersome. In tight spaces, it leads a little bit to your desire. Compliance? Dumping yard waste? Sidney, why don't you go for the compliance part? This is right up your alley.
Well, basically, dumping yard waste curbside increases the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus entering into the town's stormwater system. And the intended purpose of MBE's mandated WIP, which is the, was that, I'm sure you all,
WIP, WIP.
For local municipalities to progressively reduce the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus entering into that particular watershed. So, it's a lot, but basically, we're given a allotted number, and we have to go on diets far as what we let go into the waterways. And nitrogen and phosphorus is a big component. And reducing this grass and leaf pickup through, I guess, through the vacuum instead of bagging it, pushes us further back in this initiative. So that's about most of the reason why we're here today.
When Senator Trent does their reports once a month, he always can also talks about the nitrogen and phosphorus, how they're trying to limit it, you know, how many pounds are allowed versus how many they have. So that's, so, he also mentioned the same thing. So with respect to stormwater, it kind of also involves him as well, because he also looks at his nitrogen and phosphorus as well. Keep it up. You're doing fine. Your back one. Yeah, I want your back one. Do the top.
Yeah. Basically, where a lot of the nitrogen and phosphorus comes from, what we've been learning with the WIP whole initiative, is fertilizer and fertilizer. Most of us that have lawns, we use fertilizer, fertilizer, things like that. A lot of the compounds and things that make up that fertilizer is fortunately nitrogen and phosphorus. When we lay on our lawns, it's absorbed into the soil and then it's absorbed into the grass. When we cut it, when we place it curbside, that grass, that chemically enriched grass, goes into our waterways, and the chemicals are then absorbed into the water, which further degrades the Chesapeake Bay. So if we can come up with a system that will allow us to contain all of that as much as we can, then we're beneficial for the town, we're beneficial for the county, for the state, and ultimately, the federal government.
Okay, let's go to my department, maintenance. Okay. My fleet maintenance staff works hard to ensure all municipal vehicles are in operational condition. And as I mentioned before, the way we pick the stuff up, it's basically, it's a big shopback. That's probably the easiest way to describe it, hooked to, to a truck. And if you think about the way we pick it up, the device we have is great for leaves, works for grass, but it's salvageable. And if all the grass is dry, picks it up, not a big deal. Unfortunately, think of yourself, you have a fan. You know, you got a fan going that way, and you get one lump higher than the other. What happens? It starts spinning this way, just like your car, just like your van and everything else. And as a result, we go through a lot of fans that way. That's why we're trying to maintain, we're trying to maintain the vehicles same time. Those, that's why they go out. Because a lot of times when it gets wet, it's a lopsided thing, and it causes a lot more stress on the, on the vehicles that we have. And that, that goes back to significant amount of attention and downtime, because they physically can't pick up the stuff that's done. Personal constraints. Again, the wet leaves, leaf stump curbside after heavy rain events. You know, we bring out the leaf sucker, all it does is just clogs up. We spend all day unclogging and put it back together. Then we have to take more people, more resources if we can do other things to pick it up. In order to continue, in order to maintain our routes as fast as we can, we have to take other people from other services and slide them over. So your four to six minute operation could easily be eight to 10 million attempts all of a sudden if you get really bad, like a couple days of rain. So what we're trying to do is, again, come up with this better system where we can manage it. And what we're trying to do is we can maintain additional services.
So under your constraints, and I certainly understand those if you were to go back, what, what, what sorts are you pulling in order to, to pick the waste off the ground?
Well, again, we got, we got two different types of waste. You've got your brush pickup, which we bring out the, we bring out the little chipper with the five ton. And we also have the back truck, which, again, looks like the big shopback attached to the truck, and that also picks up materials well. And then we got the third group. My favorite is when everything gets mixed in, and that's the one you have to go either pitch it by hand or bring it back out with a truck. So realistically, we have like three groups out, how it goes. The mixed pile is the one that really gives us the most grease, because a lot of times, what looks clean is not clean. You put a mixed pile through a back truck, and it will just tear it up. So that's why we always have to be constantly looking for that, so.
So at one point, I guess you used two men. When you do it the proxy way, I guess you use about seven or eight?
Yeah. Could be eight, maybe it's ten, depends on how bad it is.
There's a five ton, there's a backhoe, four ton.
Great.
We got the one tons, we got five tons, oh yeah.
You can have 15 to 20 guys out there trying to catch up.
So actually, you're taking them off of their normal job and helping out, I understand, very good.
Exactly.
Now, this particular program will be, this, this program will be addressing grass as well as brush?
Ideally, I like to address grass. Ideally, I like to address mixed piles. I mean, I gotta walk before I run. Let me see how that shakes out. That's the reason why this is the whole feeling out process, you know, it goes. In a perfect world, decorate ideas, but let's see.
Dan, please go on. I, I understand what you're trying to do here, and I think it's a great idea, and I do feel that we are fortunate to have the service all the time. My concern is the cost of the bags. Now, you're saying contained, and I do see on the list there are containers marked grass and leaves. The container versus the bags, because the bags is a purchase every, you know, couple weeks or whatever, you're gonna throw it away, the bag, when you fill it with your grass. Container is one, you know, one, buy it once and we have it. I think would be a little more, better on people's pocketbooks.
Really?
And, you know, we all have one of those.
I just think that's two dollars for five.
That's two dollars.
Well, you have people that don't, can't afford two dollars for five bags every two weeks or whatever. I mean, it's, I, it's just, that's the concern, where there are some that say containers marked.
The trouble with containers, and we've found in the past, if it's a straight grass container, it's fine. However, containers are never straight. They always have the little hidden surprise, and that's what you have to watch. So sometimes, some people will put trash in the middle, put grass on top, and if you pick it up, and then you just shot your equipment. That's happened.
So if you have that, the brown bags, what you gonna do about that?
Brown bags?
You can't see through the brown bags?
No, brown bags, you just, we'll get to that. Brown bags, you dispose the whole thing. The whole thing can go right through the landfill. It's biodegradable. That's why we want that one.
Hidden things in there, I'm just.
Yeah, if it's, if it's, if it's in the brown bag, we just pick it up and then we just toss it, and that's it. No fuss, no muss.
The largest portion of the problem was with the containers.
Yeah.
They'd be open, and there'd be a lot of rain.
Yes.
And the grass, you know, white grass is a lot heavier than dry grass. So the staff that DPW might out there to pick it up was not capable of doing it alone, so. We had to bring it back up, which causes more time and more equipment to be caused and whatnot. The bags, they're a certain size. You can only put a certain amount of things in there.
Right.
And it's only capable of holding 50 pounds, which is, they have to be able to lift 50 pounds and work for these.
So how much, if you're bagging your grass in a, in a normal sized mower bagger, how much of that will fit in there? Just one bag per bag?
Depends on that.
Or will it?
It depends on how deep you can cut it. I mean, there's a lot of varieties.
So my yard might take three bags, which is gonna cost me how much money? I mean, it's, and that's, that's my concern is the cost.
Right, right, it's a trade off.
Nothing else, I think it's great, and I, like I say, we are fortunate to have it, but the cost to the residents for the bags is my concern.
And I'm glad you brought that point up, because initially, when you brought that, I had that same concern. And I'm glad that she visits that point again, because, you know, it, and economically, if a person can't afford a bag, and I'm gonna use your word proxy up here again, I'm gonna find an alternative use. I might get a polyethylene bag or any type of bag beyond the brown bag. So I assume that if I stuff that bag, then you're gonna pick it up regardless.
Right, but the trouble with the bag, with the brown bag, it's, we're not double handling. In other words, this bag itself, in fact, I'll get example back there. It goes right to the landfill. It's biodegradable, and it works perfectly. It takes the landfill.
I mean, I understand.
If anything else, then you have to double handle it. And again, it goes back to taking different people off different things. You know, we have a limited amount, and if I have to do a, doing long carrot, which is fine, but then the other stuff doesn't get done. That's the difference.
I understand your point, you're all taken, but again, there's.
Right, there's trade off.
Yeah, there's gonna be trade offs someplace. I mean, I'd be able to put a brown bag initially, but.
Yeah, because I think basically, reading through this, there were like 40 cents or 50 cents a bag.
It's, it's like, you know, the stack right here.
Right, right.
It's like a big off at 7-Eleven. It kind of turns out to be, you know.
Right.
And that'll give you four more.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm sold on the program. Anything to help the environment, because, I mean, that's what we need to do. We need to be more responsible as residents and people anyway. My thing is, you know, we can kind of pick all of this apart. An important part, I think, is gonna be how we present this to the community and how we educate them on this process. That's, that's gonna be the.
That's, that's why we're talking about this tonight to start out with.
Well, I'm gonna let you finish your presentation and I'll give you my comments.
As long as they're good.
Well, they're gonna be my comments. I don't care whether they're good or bad.
They're gonna be phenomenal. Example of, of where the, where the bagging does work out is your Pine Valley Apartments, where the tenants and property management are cooperative understanding of the statics. So if they bag this stuff, it hauls away, and you can see how nice the area looks itself. Maintenance of more organized residential landscape, limits the amount of blood necessary cleaning due to loose and the wet yard waste. Again, so if we can get this stuff out, it's probably, it's more better, beneficial to the community, which is why we pick up in the first place, so. We try to, we try to, we can't fight mother nature, as it were. The other thing, which is something I always, it is what it is, is time. See, we got, this, in fact, these are piles that just popped up from linear on today. This is a great example, where if it was just grass, it would be one scenario, backtrack would work. If it was just leaves, great scenario again. If it was just branches, the way it's supposed to be, it would work out. Unfortunately, you get things like this. You get everything tossed in the street. I've had pot of plants, I've had tomato plants, I've had geraniums in the plants. I mean, we've had all kinds of things. And that's, that's where, that's where your proxy comes in. This is just something which is just to maintain it. If this thing was bagged, you can maintain it. Other than that, I can't run that through a chipper. You know, I can't run through a chipper. If I suck it up, it'll, it'll go like that. So that's, I mean, there's your trade off. And look around, there are piles all over the place right there now. This is what we're finding at the moment, so. And you'll, you'll see, and we're slowly progressing to get towards it.
So how many bags would that take?
I don't know. It depends on how you crush it down. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, the fact, again, I understand you're saying the number of bags versus, but the fact you have the service. I mean, every, there are a lot of the communities have the exact same problem. It's just, when you get something like this, how do you bag it? You know, you bag it a little bit and see how it goes that way. Or, you know, if it was bags that much, you know, like, I think the dump will take it for pretty cheap, or. I mean, there's other alternatives. I mean, when it, when I, you know, before I moved up around Elkton, you know, nobody else had the yard waste, so. That's, I mean, it's a benefit to the community, but at the same time, it's, you know, again, they're trade offs. The fact it was curb pickup, for curb pickup, we need the best way to handle that, so that's why. How many bags would that take? I really don't know. Probably about three or four, I guess. I don't, it depends on what you crush them in. Sidney, do a compliance, please.
Basically, MBE, bagging yard waste is considered the best management practice. That's pretty much what I do for the town. I ensure that the town stays in compliance with MBE and state. They gave the town six requirements that we have to meet each year in order to, you know, help contribute to the upbuilding of the Chesapeake Bay. Doing this bagging yard waste initiative would increase our chances or make us look more favorable to MBE and puts us further into compliance with the state. This is not the first time I've been here talking about yard waste. That was Isabel, I did it with the former FD direct, Greg Woods. And pretty much, we tried to initiate something similar. I think in 2008, we did, we changed it, and we started bagging the grass, and we allowed tri-state at the time to collect it. That worked well, up until the landfill stopped collecting it. So that's the only reason why we went back to allowing residents to put it curbside. By putting it curbside, we're, I guess, enabling non-point source pollution, which is something I may have mentioned before. And that's part of what my job is to do, is to help the town reduce non-point source pollution. And that's litter, that's detergents, that's so, that's, you know, anything that people are pouring into the storm drain. If we can eliminate the yard waste, that'll take a huge portion of our non-point source pollution out of the equation. So that's why it's very beneficial to the stormwater management program opposed to just the regular town maintenance.
Can I ask you a question? This could be, this, but the nitrogen and phosphorus, I was trying to look back for a seven shirt report. I just put it on my table. But are, we're very low with that, and within the state regulations. We're ve, we're very low. So is that going to make that even lower? Is that the same number, or is this a different number you're talking about for the phosphorus and nitrogen?
This is a different number. This is of the WIP allocation numbers, which obviously from Gene's, I think, 65.
The numbers you're referring to are from.
From the.
Waste plant.
Plant, right.
Yeah, this is from plants.
That's what I want to make sure I'm not.
Non-point source.
Okay, all right, that's my question.
The WIP and the, and I guess the permit that we have for stormwater were standing at.
Okay.
If we don't do what we're supposed to do as far as the WIP program, which I'm sure Gene probably mentioned before, credits that we have for the discharge with our waste water treatment plant will be taken away from us to make up for the yard waste, the detergents, the non-point source pollution. And by doing that, that'll turn into a snowball of different things that state can do to the town. Which is something we don't even look into right now.
Right, right, right.
So starting this initiative would put us somewhat ahead of what we're looking for as far as the WIP.
Okay, thank you.
Michael's up off the lip. Like I said before, loose yard waste increases the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus because the fertilized grass is going straight into the storm drain, which is something people like, but in essence, it's leading to a further evil. So if we can contain it, but we can come up with a certain way to reduce the amount that we're allowing to storm drains and gutters, we'd be helping town further in compliance with the state. I looked at certain other things, like there's a rake and take program, which is where residents in the community dump grass into their yards, and you sign a sheet, and other residents or farmers or gardeners, they can come and collect that waste or collect that, collect those grasses and use it for their own purposes. I've looked at, uh, the town, towns that purchase compost bins for residents. Come to the town, they pick up a compost bin, and they put all their yard clippings into that. We've looked at towns that purchase bags, purchase, you know, rain gardens and do other incentives for residents that either compost their yard waste or, you know, bag them. And this seems like the most feasible thing for the town development. And this is what we're pushing.
This is a great idea. Okay, so this leads to why we're here tonight, okay? When I first presented this idea, you know, people said, you're crazy, which is probably right, because there's no way I can do things whole turkey. So it's like the old, it's like the old phrase, how you eat an elephant, you start at the tail. So what I'm gonna do is, I would like to do a phase planning. And, and we figured out the most, the easiest place, or not the easiest, one of the bigger places would be Patriots Glen. And with Patriots Glen, we got together with Vastman Management, and they have full support of the initiative. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna monitor. We're gonna start seeing how it goes out there, because, you know, again, they have, they have the nice golf course and all that stuff, but they always throw the stuff in the street. but they always throw the stuff in the street. So we'll start monitoring and see which way it works. We can try, you know, we'll try the advertising, we'll try certain mailings, we'll go to community meetings and we'll try to get an idea. Maybe even get a few bags to get them started, we don't know. And again, the hope is the large community will likely give us some more feedback. Based on the feedback, then we can tweak and that's how.
Let me stop you there. First of all, you got a homeowners association out there. They dictate to you what you're going to do, not to town residents. As town residents, based on their property, they do what they want to do as far as their residence. You understand where I'm coming with that? Each, the homeowners association, they have a charge and they dictate what they're going to do in that neighborhood. So if they go to a meeting and say, "We're going to start picking up trash in a bag and now your cost instead of $200 a month, it's going to be $300 a month." That's different than what you're asking us as a town resident. So I'm just letting you know that.
Okay.
Agree with it?
Is the homeowners association buying the bags to get started?
Again, I've got a many feeling process.
You haven't gone that far.
I haven't gone that far. That's why I'm going to isolate, feel the things out. I may provide them bags to start, you know, give them initially and again, that's part of the feeling out process. That's why it's a learning curve and what's the best way of presenting it. That's what we're trying to find out.
Yeah, and I can tell you, Commissioner Piner, my experiences with the different homeowners associations, they have a really hard time kind of doing what you, what you do. You know, they have the meetings, but I can tell you that the residents and homeowners, they still do what they would like to do and would serve them. Unless they, even when they start to impose fines and things like that, they find it very difficult to enforce. That's just my experience since dealing with them for the four or five years working with the town.
So ideally, if we start an area, they start bagging, they see the benefits of it, then hopefully the mindset will click in. That's what, that's what the ultimate goal would be. They see how much better it looks. I mean, they can do the old way, but again, we're limited to see what's what. If they look at their neighbor, their yards pristine and they have the pile up front, that's kind of what I'm hoping down the road, maybe that'll, you know. I guess neighbor envy is the best way we're trying to do that as well. So that's why, again, we travel an area and see what works from there. And then as we, as we take our learning pains and from there, I like to eventually expand it out. But, you know, we got to start somewhere. So that's kind of, the kind of spot I was eyeing up because it's contained, I can see what's what around there, so.
I think one of the main problems we have right now, you have a certain date for trash pickup. You have a day for recycling pickup. I haven't seen one time that everyone is on one accord where when you have the trash pickup, your trash is picked up that day, such and such. It's just same way with, when you cut your grass, Commissioner Gibbs, Commissioner Hicks, the mayor, myself, I don't think any of us is going to cut it the same day just because you say, "Cut it that day."
That's fine, but that's.
So here's my point I'm making. You're talking about containing the grass and making it look more feasible in the community and nice. You're going to have Monday, Tuesday, if the trash, the grass pickup is picked up on Tuesday, the grass is going to be picked up, you're going to come back on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday when other people are cutting their grass because they're off. No, it's still going to be bags sitting around, five and six bags at a time on the streets. My point is, I don't see how the bag is going to solve that. If anything, I would see a dumpster or something where maybe nearby community or something, maybe grass can be dumped. That's one way of doing it, but I don't see the bags being the solution for this. And I'm all for helping the economy, I mean, not the economy, environment, whatever. But I'm just saying to you, the bags are not going to be the solution, so.
Bags, bags are better than piles because people's habits, you're, Commissioner Piner, you're absolutely right. I can go pick up the stuff on Friday, what happens? Saturday morning, they're cutting it and it's going to sit there for five days. Again, because of the nature of the beast. Last year, DPW picked up over 681 tons of yard waste. So I mean, that's an awful lot. Again, it's not, it's not like it's a small job. I mean, this place is huge. That's the reason why.
So my point I was getting at, if we're going to have grass pickup on Wednesdays, people have, have first of all, got to be in the mindset that the grasses can't be put out on the, the street on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It should be picked up, either put on, on that date of the pickup or else it doesn't be picked, put out at all. I mean, that's one of the things we've got to try to make the citizens understand that we have a certain day for this, not to sit around for a week. So there's where we lost it and lost control of things by just letting people just put it out anytime they want.
Well, they get everything all over the place.
But we've done it because I heard Sidney say this, we started with bags, black bags at that, clear bags, and then I know the landfill changed all that. Then we went from bags back to brown bags. What happened to the trash can? Because there was stuff inside there that they didn't want to take. So now we have not just the citizens, I'm talking about myself too, the tax payer. Citizens are confused on which way you want to do it. Now we're right back to brown bags. Everyone's already at that point. I mulched mine two or three times first. And when I mulch it, then maybe if I do take it up, that's rough on my bag. And I'm going to tell you whether it's rough.
I'd rather mulch it. I'd be, we love you to mulch it.
I mulch it after two or three times, but you can only do that so many times before it gets so hard, your long, your cutters won't cut. So my point is, I don't want to rape and have to put it back in bags or in a trash can. I have a bag that picks it up and I dumped it because that's what was set for us to do. Now we're trying to clean up the environment. We're trying to do this and now we're back to the back breaking job.
Let me ask a question because I, that bag, you were talking about the container getting wet. We are not going to be on the same schedule and I do agree, we need to say, "You're picking up grass on a Thursday or Friday and Monday, whatever." But if that was out for three, four days and it rained for three days, what's going to happen to that bag?
Glad you asked. There you go. Here it is. Particular bags been out since March 7th. Particular ones been through three snowstorms, two rainstorms and things like that. It can take a beating. That's, that's the reason why. You know, if you get, if you buy the industrial stuff like it's heavy duty wet strays, that thing's been out in the rain. That's where we did it that way. And it's still together, still recyclable, so.
So if we go to the bags, then why, if the bags are going to cut down the amount of times that we go around picking this stuff up, why can't we go around, would you have enough people or say to just hit the developments every day? Because if we do the bags, it won't be that many.
If it works, that's where you go back to this. If it works, then maybe I can have the process to do that. If it's just easy, pick that up, throw it in a one ton, then I'm not opposed to that. But again, I got to walk before I run. That's what we're trying to find out. If that's a benefit, you know, we can look into that. It's just like you're really trash when we go.
Yeah, because like I cut my grass probably maybe twice a week. I put the stuff in the bag, I keep the bag for a couple of weeks and then when it's full, we go out on a particular day. But if we were, and pretty much I think that's where most people do it. Of course, you can't always, I might touch the grass on different days like they said, but.
Oh, they all cut Saturdays. And it goes, it goes right across the line, all Saturday.
If you were to go out every day and if this thing worked, you would get to a point where you wouldn't have that many bags being picked up a day, per day.
Well, that's, again, goes back to this. If it works out, if it's, if it's a carrot, you know, I can dangle the carrot. I don't know until we start it. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at right now.
Yeah, we considered, we considered all of the questions you had, leaving, going through mock meetings, me and Ann. The majority of calls that we get at DPW is from the Thursday, Friday callers. They want their yard to look nice. They have company coming over for, so I have company coming over this weekend. You know, I have my grandkids at this, that, this, or, and it usually occurs on Thursday and Friday. So if you bag your, your, your trash, I mean, your grass on either Thursday or Friday evening, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and the larger, I guess, developments, we can collect those at the beginning of the week and the smaller developments, we collect at the end of the week. So it doesn't look like there's bags just sitting all over town. Come up with a system that can collect a majority of the bags on a certain day. And maybe you have to, you know, take some time, Dan or I, and go and survey and see what goes on in certain streets in every development and see what we can do fast or how we can, you know, circumvent having a lot of bags just laying around town. Because that will look unsightly. That would defeat the purpose of.
Exactly. But you did say something, but to make work of all this, that a lot of people do come home on weekends on a Friday and cut their grass. If you did it on Thursdays and Fridays and you got that wise, cut that down, then on Mondays and Tuesdays, get the ones that can cut them on Saturdays and Sundays, then revert back again to Thursday and Friday.
See, if you bag it, a great example would be, I can throw that in a special dumpster when the dump gets full up and haul off a dumpster. I mean, that's another flexibility I have. With the beast, you know, with the vacuum truck, you're stuck with your stuck, you know. But if you bag something like that, then I can isolate these things. Again, that's ideas I can come up with to see how I can work with different neighborhoods. That's why we're trying to get flexible.
You can work that a lot faster because you're just going on, picking a bag, throwing it in the truck and moving on.
It's a lot quicker, yeah.
Do you have any, oh, I'm sorry. Do you have any idea what the savings will be to the public works department if we were to put this, implement this plan as far as the trucks? Because then I have question two after you tell me this number if you have it.
I would say if we, if we go, if we go through this methodology, I would say approximately maybe 10 to 15,000.
Thousand dollars to save.
10 to 15,000.
A season?
Yes.
Okay. Have you looked into, if we were to purchase these in bulk for our residents to get started, what a cost would be?
I'm not, I, I can look, I can look into, I'm not opposed to it. Basically, it's still about 50 cents a bag. So it depends on what's involved with it. And again, it goes back to this. If it's economical to buy it, then I'm not opposed to it. That's what I need to find out, what the entire cost is. I got to see who's an active participant, who's willing to do that, who just flat refuses. That's what I need to find out.
And I think, I think that was the question that I had, I, you know, I could.
Not a bad idea. I'm not opposed to it. I just got to see how it's going to be.
Yeah, it's an opportunity too, because if we can buy those and we can, maybe we can cut the costs depending on.
Exactly. That's why I'm curious.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to anything. I just need to find out what the amount's going to be. I need, I need to see how it plays first, but I'm not opposed to it at all.
I looked, I looked at Howard County. They offer all their residents two bags per seat now. So you can come down to there, you can help work with their town. Initiate something like that since we're a lot smaller now, we can probably give them five.
Oh, as an incentive?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But just to start them off in the process, so it doesn't have to be, well, you have to buy these bags now. We can let them see the benefits of it and maybe.
And your point, what I take, but Howard County is different than what we are right here. And I understand and I appreciate that you're trying to make this initially, but you're looking at two different areas.
Two different animals, you're right.
Yeah.
We've looked, I mean, we.
It's done your homework.
Realistically, we're like Aberdeen. We're the size of Aberdeen. That's why, you know, everything goes back, we're Aberdeen sized. We're not small, you know. Yeah, we're not, you know, we're not just big city, we're Aberdeen. We're, we're big.
But I thought at one time Aberdeen, you had to go someplace to even buy you bags for trash. Is that still existing? They had a program over there, Lois once, I think you went and bought bags. Do you recall?
They had, they marked, marked a program where they marked bags for trash pickup. And it costs so much per bag and that's what you put it in.
Right.
An incentive to kind of contain their trash. I think they, I'm not sure if they saw it, but I know they had.
Right.
Bring it home. Again, again, we, we, hash is pretty good. So an average cost, $2 to $3 for five large bags. Lois is a good shopper. She found a good deal with his. And again, availability, you can get them just about anywhere, you know, American Home Hardware, your Walmart, your Kmart, your Home Depot, your Lowe's, you know, kinds of things. Again, a specification, it's like 30 gallons, 15 capacity, durable and weather resistant. You can tell right there because this thing's been through two, um, snowstorms, three snowstorms and a bunch of rain. So it holds up together. And again, by, by implementing this, we'll go through our learning curve. We'll go through what works, what doesn't work, and then from there, that's what we can.
All right, that's going to be my question. You, you, you're educating us now and my question would be, but how would you try to sell it to the public?
Well, that's why, that's why we'll start with pictures, go to something, what's the best way of selling it? Between that, doing VASP and see what works and from there, you know, if I donate bags, I can donate some bags to get them started. I'm not opposed to that. And if they get used to that idea, hopefully the idea will spread. That's what we need to find out. Again, goes back to the learning curve. Until, till me and Sidney actually do it at the same time, you know, we'll, we'll get feedback. Some people love it or some people think it's awful and then that's.
Would you be inclined or willing to use money out of your budget initially to hand bags out, to get people started, to see if it works? I mean, as you just said, it's a give and take. You're going to be on the end of the.
And, and. I'm not supposed to do anything.
And, and just on a note that Mr. Gibbs is saying.
Yes.
I would like to get with the people that we're going to be, that's going to be supplying the bags. Just like myself at a place where I work at. When we have a supplier, we set up a contract where if we're going to do something for them, they're going to do something in return. Just like we do with the water system, our, our Seven Trent. At the end of the year, if we're making them $30,000, I want to see some kickback back to the town of Elton. That's the way I want to look at it. I don't want to just make everybody else rich and maybe we take my, our pockets.
Right. I just got to find what's involved. We'll put a Baltimore Raven thing on it just for you. There you go.
I have, I have one last question and then I, I think we've done enough trash for the night.
Oh, it's never trash. It's good.
If someone was home all week and they are looking to save money and that person had that bag ready for you at the curb, but they're there, can you dump that bag and give it back to them beings that work so well?
Hmm, I've heard that too because again, you're double handling. It, it goes back to the plastic bag, the clear bag, and that's what it goes down to. I mean.
It's only 50 cents.
Okay.
Yeah, so exactly. It's only 50, I agree. It's only 50 cents. So that's, exactly. It's only 50 cents. I agree. But that's, I'm not, like I said, it's just, your, the 50 cents to get the bag back might cost me $1.40. I mean, by the time we handle everything, it's shifted around. That's, it's a cleaner method, so.
So what's Northeast do then? You said Northeast has bagged grass. Do they, well, they, how they get their bags? Do they get the bags to the residents or?
Uh, then Waste Management does that one. I think Waste Management provides it and I think they collect it too. But that's, you know, they, the town doesn't collect it. Waste Management does. Yeah.
Have we checked Waste Management, see if they?
Oh, you don't, yeah, we've checked them. They'll, they'll do it. They'll call Sestronomical, but they'll pick it up in a heartbeat, so.
Real quick, could you go back to the, the towns?
Sure.
Or the page with the towns, who's doing what?
Sure.
And then the question I have for you is before you kind of do a test, your test initiative, are you going to kind of work out some more bugs? In other words, are you going to do the, decide whether to do the Thursday and the Friday? Or just, you, you will decide all that before you do the initiative?
Well, what, what, what we'd like to do is work with the homeowners, like with the Patriots Glen, just as an example to get an idea what works better. Then that's why we want to keep everything open. And then based on that, then we know how it plays out. In other words, is there incentive? Yes, what's your incentive and all that? That's why, you know, it's incentive to the homeowner, incentive to the town. That's what we're trying to do three.
Depending, depending on who shows up at the, usually the ones that show up are the most active in the community.
Right. And if one sees it, the rest will say, "Hey, this looks pretty good," versus the other.
Well, we'll be listening to questions, listening to what they have to say. We'll be taking it initially from them and see what, what days usually they see a lot more grass, what days they got. We'll be doing that. We'll be putting together a webpage and probably some, something in Cecil Wig and maybe some other things we might try to. But this is very initial.
Right. Based on the learning curve exactly from here, then we know what we're going through.
And the last, the last little part, the last little question I have for you is along with all of this, do we have some type of plan for enforcement? In other words, the ones that say, "Hey, I'm not bagging it. I don't care what you say. I'm throwing this stuff on."
It's part of the learning curve. Can I do anything? No. I mean, I honestly, to be frank with you, no, you're stuck with it. But those guys will get the regular day versus the extra service. I mean, we can trade extra service with the regular means of benefits. If they want to bag it, that's fine, but you're going to get the ones a week. The other ones, if they do it, maybe I'll do Thursday, Friday to help them off the bags, you know, as an incentive. Again, that goes back to the learning curve. In other words, is there, is there incentive? Yes. What's the best incentive? That's what we're going to determine, so.
Well, it's definitely would be a learning curve, just like we did with the recyclables.
Exactly. This is recyclable, this is recyclable still over again. Correct.
Recyclables are working now and if you institute this, then it'd be a learning curve.
All right. What do you?
I mean, I, I, trust me, I understand what you guys are saying. I guess I'm just a little different. I feel like you make a decision, you put a plan together, you, 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 you start the plan, but you've got to have some way to enforce it, you know, and, and, you know, you've got to have that in the plan because, you know, you need to, if you muddle it too much, if you, if you're so flexible, I don't feel like it'll, it'll get off the ground. And obviously, this is something that we need to do. I mean, it, it's something that needs to be done. As, as residents, I mean, I'm a resident. I mean, it's our responsibility. We have to do it sooner or later, so.
So the whip too calls us, Jeannie, to, I know they've got, we've talked about it a lot, to enforce us, to do some more things coming down the pipe.
Our MS4, it's my understanding, our MS4 permit will have some new requirements and reporting criteria on it. And we can claim credit for the street sweeping that we pay for, but I don't, I don't know how we would report the fact that we allow people to put their yard waste in the street. It's a sort of counterintuitive, the street sweeping. So, but yeah, we're going to, Sidney handles the MS4 permit and I believe there's going to be a lot more requirements and reporting. As a matter of fact, Carrie's currently working on all of our storm pond data and trying to get that in order so we are prepared to look to retrofit some of the storm ponds to meet our loading requirements. And it's my understanding they will take our, when we're above the level, which we, we are, above level of the phosphorus and nitrogen that we're permitted to discharge, will take that amount out of our sewer capacity. They will, they will balance the books that way.
I mean, you know, listen, we need, we need to have something.
You're going to get it one way or get it another.
Well, I contacted MBE, we had meetings, Dan and I, I contacted MBE to see what they had in store for us today. They said they're still developing their list or something. So what, what we do know from 2008, the permit was that they're changing it from best management practice to maximum extent possible. So they're not looking for us to do our best or to try as hard as we can. They want us to meet that maximum level regardless. There's no, there's no second, there's no third. We have to do.
There's a certain threshold that they need, you need to meet.
I think they were calling it every, everything by everyone everywhere. I was like.
It's, it's called, the EPA is currently there at the top of the East Coast right now.
I was going to say, are they starting further up rather than here?
They've already been, I'm talking county, they've already been at Alexandria.
Yeah, that's where they need to be.
They don't announce anything. They just show up.
Well, I know we glazed over the part of the whip where it mentioned like criminal charges and things. So I don't want to bring that up now, but it is a serious matter. So, you know, certainly.
Because down the road, you just never know. Exactly. Because they'll come in, that's, you know.
I certainly hope we take it seriously. You got my support.
Give them the MS4 permits.
Michelle, can you turn the lights up? I think it's going to go in the car.
The question's good. The answer's great.
There we go.
Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity. Jeannie, I've got to do one quick thing for you. Give a sexual thing. Yeah, just a quick. Yeah. We're going to go jump so we can have, have the proclamation, P6 2013 Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Do that before Jeannie real quick.
Do you want me to read that?
Yeah, would you please?
The Mayor's Minister of Town Development proclamation, Sexual Assault Awareness. Proclamation, Mayor's Minister of Town Development, proclaiming age of 2013 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas the personal safety of all people living in Elton is a compromise for policymakers and the community at large. Whereas rape and sexual abuse represent an overwhelming threat to the integrity of Maryland communities. Whereas nearly 400,000 men and women are raped each year in the United States. And whereas 84% of all sexual assaults are not reported. Whereas 29% of assaults were perpetrated against victims under the age of 11 years old. And whereas the sexual assault victim's rights, needs and concerns deserve the attention and support of citizens of Elton. Now therefore, be resolved that the Mayor's Commissioners of the Town of Elton hereby proclaim the month of April 2013 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the Town of Elton and urge all citizens to commit to their individual and collective resources to aid victims of sexual assault and support victim services in our community. And witness where we have here to unset our seal, our hands and seals this third day of April 2013.
Okay, motions accept proclamation. Samu?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. There you go. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you. We have two events coming up. Let the flowers, with Mary Jethi, can give them out to you for the. We have the family fun fair. It's on April 13th and it's going to be in the health center parking lot off of East Texas. And we're going to have food games giveaways, but also recruit child identification programs. Where they get their picture of their parent principal, ECD. And we're also having a human trafficking workshop for frontline responders. April 19th upstairs, from eight to four. And if anybody needs to use, they're available and this is, this is free. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good day, Jeannie. Good, Jeannie.
Application, grant application. I had informed the board back in February, the email that Cecil County Office of Economic Development was preparing to submit an application to the state for the redesignation and expansion of the Maryland Enterprise Zones within Cecil County. Elton currently has two enterprise zones, one at the Upper Chesapeake Corporate Center and the other at the, it's called Walnut Station. It's, was formerly known as Vantage Point at the southwest intersection of Dogwood Road and Maryland 213. It's currently undeveloped property. The enterprise zone designation expires after 10 years, and ours is getting ready to expire. The primary benefits to an enterprise zone designation is that properties within the zone, industrial, industrial manufacturing type properties, are eligible for a 10-year phase local property tax credit and a one-time state income tax credit in return for job creation or real property improvements. And the tax credit is on the improvements that they make to the existing site. The tax credit provides incentives to attract and retain businesses within the enterprise zone. There are three businesses in the Upper Chesapeake Corporate Center that are currently taking advantage of the enterprise zone tax credits. When the county economic development office contacted the, again, our mass, I looked at our, our current zoning max for industrial zone land, and I thought that we might as well include all of our business industrial zone land in this enterprise zone if we're permitted to, if the state will approve it, to encourage more businesses to locate in the enterprise zones and to retain the ones that we have that are currently in there. The, the county has submitted a draft enterprise zone application. I think everyone has a copy of. If anyone in the audience wants one, I have additional copies here if you'd like them. So how it works is businesses in the enterprise zone can claim a 10-year credit against local real property taxes on a portion of the real prop, of their real property improvements. The credit is 80% of the assessment increase during the first five years. Credit then decreases 10% annually thereafter to 30% in the 10th year. The state actually will reimburse us back half of the taxes that were baited. So we, we actually get back half of that. The enterprise zone has no costs unless businesses make investments, you know, in their property. Eligible businesses in the enterprise zone may also claim a one-year or a three-year credit for wages paid to new employees in new positions. The general credit is a one-time $1,000 credit per worker. For economically disadvantaged employees, the credit increases to a total of $6,000 per worker, distributed over three years. And again, this is new worker, new employees in new positions. A bigger zone would mean that more, there's more opportunity for businesses to apply for the tax credits. There are incentives for companies to select and stay in Elton's enterprise zone. Are there any questions on the enterprise zone?
It's been working out so far now for us.
Yeah, currently, Steve, I had checked with Steve, and he showed us how it's, we'll make the application to the county for the tax credit. The county reviews it against their criteria, and then we automatically get back half of the taxes that are baited.
So in fact, we are just responsible for half of the, the total credit. When the state matches, so we get half from the state.
And again, it's just for, the, the one, one is a one-time credit for new employees. The other is a tax payment on the assessed value of additional improvements on property.
It's a declining credit with 10-year life, but then again, it's shared equally with the state.
And again, we have three businesses in town taking advantage of that currently. So on this map, what I did was, we have the Upper Chesapeake Corporate Center here, which that's gonna, we're gonna ask to reinstate that. And this is the Vantage Point property here. But we wanted to include the Dwyer property, the Boar property, Brady's property, and all the other industrial zone lands within town, within the, the town proper.
This also helps us maybe draw some more businesses in town.
Yes. What it is, is it's, you know, we're offering credits in exchange for job creation and investments in the town. Do you want me to read the resu, should I read the resolution? Okay. The mayor commissioners of the town of Elton, resolution R three dash 2013, designation of enterprise zones. Whereas Maryland's enterprise zone tax credit program is a joint effort between the state and local governments to provide tax incentive, incentives to businesses and property owners located in economically distressed communities. And whereas the Cecil County enterprise zone is set to expire on December 14th, 2013, thus eliminating an important economic development tool for the town of Elton. And whereas the town of Elton desires to have the current zone redesignated and expanded to allow existing businesses in the town and prospective new businesses to utilize these incentives for an additional 10 years. And whereas the application will include additional sites in Elton. And whereas the primary benefits to businesses that are located within an enterprise zone are eligible for local property tax credits and state income tax credits. And whereas eligible businesses in an enterprise zone may claim a 10-year credit against local pro, local real property taxes on a portion of real property improvements. The credit is 80% of the assessment increase during the first five years. The credit then decreases 10% annually thereafter to 30% in the 10th year. And whereas eligible businesses in an enterprise zone may claim one-year or three-year credits for wages paid to new employees in new positions. The general credit is a one-time $1,000 credit per new worker. For economically disadvantaged employees, the credit increases to a total of $6,000 per worker, distributed over three years. Businesses claim the enterprise zone income tax credits on the 500 CR form. They submit their business or individual income tax credits to the comp core. And whereas the enterprise zone is an important incentive for the town to access, to encourage existing businesses to expand and attracting new businesses to locate within the town. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Elton is in support of this application to redesignate and expand the town of Elton enterprise zone for 10 years. Written pass this third day of April 2013, mayor commissioners of the town of Elton.
Just one quick thing, you said 1,000 credit per new, new employee. In other words, if they hired six or seven employees, they get each one.
It's a one-time credit.
That's pretty good.
It's a new employee, new position.
Good. Okay. Any other questions, Jeannie, or anything?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion accepted?
I have a question before you go, it's course offer. Who prints your maps? I know certainly what you do, you deal with a lot of mapping. I know technology has a copy. Who does your work for you?
Well, this map here was generated by the economic development office of the county. I printed this out on the printer that we just purchased.
You just have one of those? Okay, good.
This is the first time we've had a color one that I can do.
Okay, but that's just the sides of the paper, I know, okay, that's fine. But it's, it's good that you have that.
If I could use something like that yourself, you print out something?
No.
I can get a motion accepted, resolution R three dash 2013.
Sub move.
Thank you for the discussion. All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Jeannie. You go, Jeannie. You got which, do you go on the proclamation for?
For the fair housing month.
Okay, proclamation for the, for housing month, P five dash two 13, 2013.
April is fair housing month, and the town ordinarily will have a proclamation declaring April Fair Housing Month. Mayor Commissioners of the Town of Elton proclamation. The town of Elton is proud to join the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in celebrating the 45th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, also referred to as the Fair Housing Act. And whereas the 1968 Civil Rights Act guaranteed the right of all Americans to fair and equitable housing and prohibited discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, religion, and national origin, and was later amended to additionally prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender and to protect the disabled and families with children. And whereas in order for the Fair Housing Act to be effective in prohibiting discrimination, it requires the vigilance and continuing cooperation at all levels of government, the real estate and home building industries, banks and lending institutions, landlords and citizens. And whereas throughout Maryland, this spirit of cooperation is being provided through the efforts of our federal, state, and local governments, and with the support of many community and nonprofit organizations. And whereas promoting equal housing opportunities is essential to our goal of promoting non-discrimination in all areas of life and for all of our citizens. Now therefore, read the mayor commissioners of the town of Elton to hereby proclaim April 2013 as Fair Housing Month. In witness thereof, we have here and after, set our hands and seal of the town of Elton this third day of April 2013, the mayor commissioners of the town of Elton.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the proclamation.
That's sub move.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Jeannie.
I would like to make a comment to that. You know, one of the things that the town does, we have the, the Elton Housing Authority. Cynthia Osborne, the director of the Elton Housing Authority, would like to in the future be notified in advance so she can actually come and, and, and present the ways that her, the Elton Housing Authority, you know, helps provide fair housing for, for the town for many different things that they do. And I, I contact her, she will be contacting the town as to when she can come do the presentation, probably at the next meeting or something.
Oh, that's great.
Okay?
Okay, Louis.
I'm sorry. The item I have is the Bell Hill Water Tower. The board as well aware that we've launched several years ago a rehab program for our water towers. We completely re-adoptated the Blue Ball Tower, which is 500,000 gallons. We've completely rehabbed the Bell Hill, I mean, that's, Thompson State Sandbike, which is 200,000 gallons. And the nerd, the third tank on our agenda is the Bell Hill. A couple of months ago, I had a company called Mumper Wardman doing analysis. They actually brought in a piece of equipment and did internal and external inspection of the, of the tank and recommended recoding and some other improvements to that tank to bring it up to standard. We had KCI give a, do a cost analysis for all the work. They estimated approximately $784,000 to bring that tank up to standard. Lee G. Lee is an engineer with KCI. She was the lead engineer, I believe, for the rehab of the Bell Hills, the Thompson Estates. And everybody's been out there to take a look, and they, they can see how great a job that not only the contractor did, but our engineer doing the oversight for this, this work. Their proposal, total for all the services they'll provide during the course of this process is $76,300. That's a fraction of about 10%, a little less than 10% of what we estimate the cost of the rehab will be. Unfortunately, we believe there's lead, actually we know there's lead in the paint out there, so we have to contain the whole thing, that's why it's so expensive. Lee G. I've already authorized KCI to do pre-construction soil analysis before we do any work on a tower or sand bike. We always analyze the soil prior to the work to make sure it doesn't have lead or anything in it. So when, and we'll do a post-construction also. I've authorized her to, again, that process, and I think they've played it out or whatever. A lot of people don't understand or realize that the actual Bell Hill Tower is not on town-owned property, it's on the property by the Maryland Transportation Authority, and we have a potential easement for our tower. So we'll probably have to get clearance from them also. I would recommend that the board authorize KCI to prepare this rehab specs and provide engineering services, engineering and inspection services so I can get moving on this. We have a year, I think, to have it done, but we don't have a whole year to have it done because when you put coatings on towers, they get to the dew points and things of that nature and temperatures. So you only have an envelope of weather that's suitable for that work. So we have to have it done by, I think, summer or early fall. So we're gonna move, we wanna move quickly on it.
How long would KCI take to do what they have to do?
I don't think it'll take them very long to do their job. We don't know how many contractors are available. We have to meet all federal standards in terms of Davis Bacon Wage Act and environmental review and all that, so I don't know how long that'll take.
The, the state had sent us with our grant contract deadlines that we had to meet. I forwarded those deadlines to Lee G. and Lee G. then backed up their date so that they would be consistent with our deadlines with the state.
Okay. All right. Our motion to accept the, the KCI proposal for the Bell Hill Water Tower renovation project. Sub move. Second.
Second.
And for the discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thanks for coming, Lee G., we appreciate it. No questions, Lee G.?
No.
That's all I have.
Okay, I don't really have any whole business. By Joe? Thank you, old business.
I guess I've got one question. Louis, I know I asked this a couple of times. The, I know it's a state, a state highway. The, the traffic light over at, where's the Walnut Lane and 279 and North Street and all? I, I saw that they changed it out, but what, will it, is it in effect or will it be in effect soon?
It's been in effect.
It's, it's been in effect? I've never seen the arrow.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you wouldn't find it see it unless somebody was making a turn.
I've been there, and it's never, it's on, yeah, on the 279, you're facing eastbound. Should be a left turn signal there. Okay, I've just never, maybe it just wasn't from.
Sometimes you don't, you don't hit that just right.
Okay, it just gives you the green light, I understand. Okay, thank you, thank you.
That does remind me then too, for new business, Louis was talking about lights on 40 and Milburn Boulevard there by the old Bowers. Can you have some to have them checked out because there is a, a left-hand turn signal there. It's an arrow there, and I've watched it. It will turn green, the arrow will turn green, and nobody's turning there. And while as long as that light's green, and that arrow's green, it holds the traffic up on the other side. And I think those arrows are only supposed to come out when somebody trips them. But this thing goes on all the time, and nobody's sitting in the right, left-hand lane. And it backs the traffic up on the other side.
Okay, I'll, I'll get observe and.
Because that happened to me the other day, when that turned, that did happen, and we sat there for a long time, and when you get down to Delaware Avenue, by the time you get there, that light's lit red. So I just have somebody check that, if they could. New business, the new business, the other thing we have, we received notice that the Maryland Emergency Management Agency has approved our reimbursement for Hurricane Sandy for our cleanup in the amount of $32,342.94. That's 75% of the eligible cost of the $43,123.92. So I'd certainly like to thank Dan and Steve for extraordinary effort in making sure this gets through and that we got some money back.
That's why they get paid the salary.
New business, other thing, um, we have, um, we received notice that the Maryland Emergency Management Agency has approved our reimbursement for Hurricane Sandy for our cleanup in the amount of thirty-two thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. That's seventy-five percent of the eligible cost of the forty-three thousand, one-twenty-three ninety-two. So I sort of like to thank Dan and Steve for extraordinary effort in making sure this gets through and that we got some money back.
That's why they get paid a salary.
Good work. Good work.
Reiterate, yeah, that's why they get paid.
For my back.
I have one more thing here, that's, I did have one more down there. Smart meters are coming. Um, I see this from Delmarva Power, that they're pleased to advise that in April twenty thirteen, Delmarva Power begin installing advanced digital electrical meters, commonly referred to as smart meters, in residential homes and businesses in the Delmarva Power, Maryland service area. This installation is part of the larger advanced metering infrastructure initiative, which was authorized by Maryland Public Service Commission in March of twenty thirteen. Uh, the deployment of the AMIs in Maryland is a long-term investment that will help to improve reliability and customer service. Installing smart meters will help to transform today's power grid into one that is more flexible and efficient. After the smart meters installed and activated, customers will benefit from receiving fewer estimated bills and more tools to help them better manage their energy use and the environment. So if you see someone coming around, um, they are gonna be sending letters out and a lot of information to the residents as to what's happening, so with something new, more technology, I guess, coming around, so if you're seeing by, that's what they're doing, so you'll be notified.
In some communities, there's been a lot of pushback on those. I'm not, I'm not sure why, but...
Really?
Yeah, so...
Well, it did say too, if you, um, a customer prefers not to receive a smart meter or have one removed, they can contact Delmarva.
Yeah.
So I guess it's a test thing, if you see how it works, and if you don't like it, then you can have it removed, you know? So I don't, must have to wait and see what, how it does and how your electric bill goes, that's all. That's the only thing I have, anything? Right, Joe?
I have a couple things.
Okay.
Um, first thing, I did send an email out to the Mayor and Commissioners regarding a, um, considering the consumption of alcoholic beverages on the street for the car show. Last year at the July sixteenth meeting, it was actually Mr. Nicholson that requested that, and you approved that, um, and the Alliance Board asked if I would mention it again for this year. The car shows begin already in a couple weeks, April twenty-fifth, May twenty-third, June twenty-seventh, July twenty-fifth, and August twenty-second. Um, so I didn't know how the board felt about that, uh, request.
I thought you voted, uh, to, to approve it.
Well, we did, but it was for last year. I don't know if it was for, I don't believe it was for continuing car shows.
Right.
Um, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention again.
And what that would allow is what, to, for them to sell?
No, no, well, there, we did not ask to sell on the street if they wish to. I think it would be nice if they, they could, but what it was is if they were going into the North Street Hotel establishment, he'd put something in a plastic container that they could bring out to the street.
Right.
Correct, Mr. Nicholson?
Right.
Um, and they are, as you know best, just driving expensive vehicles, so it's not like they get out of the hand or, you know?
Can I make a question? Re, uh, dedicate those dates, those, uh, those months?
We'll, we'll prepare a waiver.
Okay, okay. All right, so we have a waiver, then we can, yeah, over there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, the next thing was, we're painting the town purple again, the month of May, for cancer awareness. Uh, the May first Friday is May third, so there will be a lot of things going on downtown, and there is a jail, anyone wishing to get into the jail and bail. I did send everybody emails on that also. Um, it, it's a fun time, so set up thirty minutes, it is a lot of fun. Um, the dedication ceremony for the Elton Boys and Girls Club, I'm really excited about, is April thirteenth. The public is welcome, the Mareska family will be here, Dr. Michael Mareska, um, the daughter, Felicia, Mrs. Mareska, there is a seventy-five percent chance she will be here, she is ill, uh, but they're still going to get her here, so everyone is welcome to that. We're having a very good response on that. And tomorrow is Cecil Business Expo, so come out and, uh, see all the businesses in our community. It's at Sagerly Firehouse.
Right.
There's free workshops all afternoon, so I wanna just get a plug on all these things that are happening. So, that's it.
Yeah, there's a couple instances, I was here on last week, the Human Resource Office was closed. Louis, I don't know what happened there, but certainly we knew that two people were working, and I would think that that office would be open if they had been staggered.
Well, there was a training, there was training there.
Well, whether it was a training or not, I mean...
No, I agree. One could've went, and the other one stayed, and so...
So could we look into that to see if, 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 if two were in the building, that that office remains open?
Yeah.
Appreciate it very much, sir. And, Sydney, you, uh, did an outstanding job with your, with thorough presentation, you've done your research, and certainly, being a teacher and administrator at one time, uh, I'd give you an A.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Very nothing else? Do I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All those in favor? Uh, this is adjourned.